Consent agenda, need to remove K. And then, under, let's see, Old Business, remove F1. And also, under Old Business, we're going to add Public Works job. If not, then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Do you have all those in favor of passing the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, name. The agenda is passed. Next up, consent agenda, remaining consent agenda need to be discussed? Not? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Both of you?
Second?
See, all those in favor of passing consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say name. Consent agenda is passed. Um, the city council, public forum.
I have to read off this because my printer decided to shoot on me. Um, I'm in, oh, sorry, duty report, 403 Third Avenue Southwest. I'm here in regards to Tim Cho's letter to the editor and his appearance at the last city council meeting, and to Matt Nelson's letter to the editor in the Post Bulletin. Tim said that there was no questions, emails, or phone calls regarding the Folkested building to him or Matt. I wonder why Matt didn't mention in his letter that on March 11th, 2014, he commented they should have left the Folkested building alone, but it was too late. Or that we paid the Dodge County Historical Society for the expenses and that for the carriage house taken off the Folkested property. Now, all of these dates that I'm going to tell you is in 2014. On April 9th, 2014, Ted Gilson asked about how much the Folkested project cost, and Jason Farnsworth asked if the expense of the building was going to be wrapped in with the TIP bond for the open end development. On April 23rd, I asked if the council wasn't concerned about the dirt and the soil that was around the Folkested building with all the gas and oil that was poured onto the ground when it was a garage. Mr. Nelson and Mr. Lemp both said no. On May 14th, after I asked the council some questions, some were from me and others were from people that contacted me, asking to ask counsel. Nelson told me that he was, um, done listening to me coming to the meeting, asking questions to the council from other people. I told him that some of them had sent emails to him, council members, Mr. Lemp and Mr. Martin, and never got any answers back. They said that wasn't true, but yet I had an elderly man stop me after the meeting and say he had sent an email to Nelson and Lemp two weeks earlier and still had not gotten an answer. I also told the board, the funny thing is, one of the questions requested came from a board member from the planning and zoning, but we know that at that time, the council didn't listen to the planning and zoning at all times. This isn't the first time that Mayor Nelson tried to push his authority. At one of the first meetings after he became the mayor, Jason Farnsworth went to stand up to ask a question during the, um, the meeting, and Mayor Nelson, oh, Mayor Nelson told him to sit down, he'd heard enough of him at the planning and zoning meeting. I wish that the council meetings were videotaped then so you all could have seen it. Where was the Post Bulletin with headlines on these situations? I've been at all but one of the, one of the council meetings since the new council and mayor took the office, and I've never heard the mayor or council talk to anyone like that. Getting back to the questions on Folkested building. On the October 8th bill meeting, I asked what the interest rate for the TIP bond was on the April 6th, bond on the April 16th was, and Mayor Nelson said he didn't know, but would check into it and get back to me, but never did. I still wonder if the rent from the two businesses in the Folkested building even paid the interest. Also at this council meeting, I request under the Data Practices Act for an itemized statement as to what the Folkested development cost was and the cost of the open end development. I also asked how it was paid for, what funds paid for that part, including the overruns and extras. At the October 22nd council meeting, I asked about the data request, and Mr. Lemp said he was working on it. Lemp informed me the copies and compiling the information would cost me. I stated that the city numbers did not match up with what was in the newspaper. I told them that I would pay for it when I get all the information, which I still not got all of it. And I showed them on the form I had from the Attorney General's Office after I called them to fill out if I didn't get the information. I received some of the information on the Folkested project at the next council meeting, but nothing on the open end Lyons Park development. After that meeting, Lemp caught me in the hall to tell me that there was still some stuff for the Folkested project that wasn't there. This is a few examples of, yes, the public did ask about plus questions, plus there are emails and letters to the editor about it. While I am up here, I would like to say that I've not agreed with everything that this council or mayor have done, that at least they let me talk to them about it. Mayor Johnson and I butted heads on the first round of administrator interviews, but we got through it. It was written that Mayor Johnson appointed me to the committee to hire the new administrator because I was his friend. All I knew about Steve Johnson before I met him at the meeting when he was running for the mayor was that he was Pastor Johnson's son and partner with Stevenson Insurance, whom we have our home insurance through. Also, I was referred to as only a daycare provider. I have done daycare for 41 years, and I've interviewed a lot of parents in that time. I've been the executive secretary for United Way of Dodge County for 31 years and interviewed a lot of agencies that we allocate money to, and I was chairperson for the church's FTRC, and in that time, we interviewed and hired two youth directors, three secretaries, and had a new minister come at the end of my term. So I have done a lot of interviewing. It's also written that I should have been taken off the committee as soon as Mr. Martin applied for the administrator position. I don't know if it is public knowledge as to how I scored Mr. Martin or not, but if it is, I think the person that wrote this about me would have to eat his words. Thank you. And one question I'd like to ask Mr. Martin before I leave is, when we got the money from Rochester for the incubator meeting or building and that for Folkested and that, was it not, or am I misunderstanding, that in three years, the people that rented that building had to move out and bring in another new jobs into that, or new businesses into that building?
That was not a requirement of the sales tax money, that was a requirement of the contract to the GGA had with the renters.
Okay. So then, just like Home would have had to leave in another year?
Or renew the lease.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Another public forum? Okay, we're going to go right into the public hearing. Open the public hearing.
Can I have a question? Is there a letter to be read on the record by Melissa Ferris?
Yes, there was, but we are, we have taken, we have taken that off the agenda and are leaving it as a normal time.
Okay.
Okay, back to the public hearing. Open that up.
Hi, I'm Pam Beely, I work for the Department of Health in the Source Water Protection Unit out of Rochester. And just answer any questions you have regarding the Part Two of the Wellhead Protection Plan. I worked with Charlie and the former consultant on developing the Part Two. I handed out a little, a kind of stepwise process for how Wellhead works. If you don't remember from the time when we were here before, and if you'd like, I could quickly go through that with you, just to refresh your memory. So, Wellhead protection is really a state program that comes to us through the Safe Drinking Water Act. And the idea of it is to prevent contamination of municipalities' aquifer and wells from the land surface. So, stating that, you first have to decide, you know, what area are we going to look at to protect? That's called the delineation, the step one in the sheet. A delineation is a groundwater modeling exercise that looks at the geology, the amount of water that's being pumped, the transmissivity of the rock to the well, various things, and through a groundwater modeling exercise, at a minimum of 10-year time of travel to the well is delineated. And that's what's represented, except with some squaring up on the second page for Cassin. In addition to that, the step two of the process is to look at the water quality of the wells, the construction of the wells, and again, the geology to say whether or not the wells are vulnerable to contamination from the land surface. In the case of Cassin, what we're looking at are the primary wells, wells number four and five, and they're in the Jordan Aquifer, that's where they get their water from, and they're considered not vulnerable to contamination because of the fact that there's so much geologic protection above them. And well number two is the emergency well, and we don't do the same delineation for that. But taking that information, then, this area was squared off to be the area we call a drinking water supply management area, to be protected. Now, moving on to step three, we have to look at what is within this drinking water supply management area that could contaminate those wells. Because of the fact that the wells are considered not vulnerable, we only require an inventory of other wells. And the idea with that is that, so you have this activities going on in the land surface, and then you have the protective layers, but other wells can provide a pathway from that land surface down into the aquifer that the community is using. So that is the reason why we require an inventory of the wells. So, we looked at historical information from the Department of Health. We've been doing investigations with communities since, I'm not quite sure the date for Cassin, but back in the 1920s. Cassin's lucky you have some old sandborne fire insurance maps, these are from the late 1800s that showed what Cassin looked like back then in terms of, of fire protection and where the wells were at that time. And then, just the knowledge, local knowledge, we took that together and we made an inventory of wells. And what we came up with were five wells that are considered active, meaning that they're being used. Two of them were private wells and the three city wells. And then we came up with 12 potential unused wells, and these would be historic wells, including probably two old municipal wells that were located over, adjacent to the fire hall. No. So, with that information, then, we strategized, okay, what are we going to do to further evaluate this? Regarding the active wells, there's no problem with active wells. So, the plan just talks about trying to do education with the private well owners to say, you know, maintaining your well is good for you and it's good for us. Regarding the, um, the wells that we were not quite sure, you know, what, how they were treated in terms of abandoning those wells, that we would kind of go through a process of looking at historical information, hopefully Cassin, the old records, to see how those wells were treated. And, you know, at some point, if it looks like, we think that they weren't sealed properly, then we go to the next step and actually try to find the wells and properly seal them. Stating that, I should also mention that the Department of Health has grant money to help do the measures that are in the plan. So with that, I guess those are the highlights of the plan. You're very lucky to have non-vulnerable aquifer. I deal with a lot of communities that have multiple water quality problems. So, does anybody have any comments or questions?
Charlie, we were going like households and take samples of water that come out of closets periodically.
Only for lead and copper. They don't, they don't want us to take samples in homes because we don't, we can't control their plumbing.
Right. And the lead and copper piece is required under the Safe Drinking Water Act, which, yeah, it's a plumbing thing, but we've got to do it anyway.
Does anyone, anyone in here have any questions for us?
So I think moving forward, it would be Charlie and Brandon and I would, you know, try to implement the plan. We may make minor modifications to the document, now the document will go to the Department of Health and sent out to a number of state agencies that have water responsibilities for approval, so, yep.
Ken?
Yeah, I mean, not so much questions. I may speak for a minute representing Kansas Steel Township, you know, where...
Oh, on, is this on the Wellhead?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I just... Larry won't keep me quiet anymore. Yeah. I'm Kim Foley, and I live south of here, but I'm a supervisor with Kansas Steel Township, and I think fellow supervisor Larry Edgar's here this evening, too. And since we come into Cassin, that, they sent us a CD on all of this, which I printed out and put in a book and organized, and we passed it around, so it, it looks good. We don't have, at least myself, Larry can speak to any negative comments, kind of learning, learning from it. Myself personally, been involved quite a bit, like with feedlots and feedlot permitting. You get around Pine Island, Blooming Prairie, Sargent, and a little bit out between daycare centers and feedlots, you look at the wells and the distance all around them, too. But I just wanted to mention that, that thanks for the document. We don't have any comments, I'm learning from it. It looks good, good to us and understand that part of it, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Do I need to have a motion? Okay, so on Wellhead Protection Plan for the City of Cassin, Part Two, we adopt Part Two for the motion. I'll make the motion. Second? Okay, motions have been made for the Wellhead Protection Plan for the City of Cassin to adopt Part Two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, no committee report? Next up, as Old Business, we scratched the meeting time discussion, it'll be the Public Works. We have been doing some interviewing, we got quite a few applications in, we eliminated some through some points and some things like that, Teresa, Doug and myself, and we narrowed it down to two people, and we interviewed two people, very good, both very good qualifications. And we came up with, you know, we did our point system on that also, and we came up with Charlie Bradford, who's our Shore and Water Department head, to be the superintendent of Public Works. So that was the recommendation from the three of us, Teresa, Doug and myself, and I guess is there any discussion, any questions, does anybody have on that?
No, I think he did just fine.
Yeah, I think he's in good hands, he's, yes, very knowledgeable about the city. There you go. I'd like to move ahead as soon as we can on this, to get him in that position. Is there a date that we should look at, or just...
It could be effective tomorrow if...
No, I think we should make it effective right away, on the 15th?
Fourteenth, 14th tomorrow? Yep, 14th tomorrow.
Is it easier on a, is it easier to do it on a pay period or something?
No.
Doesn't make any difference to you?
Doesn't make any difference to me.
Okay, well, what I'm recommending then is then to start Charlie Bradford for the City of Cassin out to the Public Works, that of the Public Works, and I would like to start him at step two. Does anybody, yeah, I don't know what, yeah.
I don't have it with me, but step one was not a significant increase over what Charlie is currently earning.
Well, and step two isn't really either.
But at least it gives them some recognition.
It's about a dollar a mile or more is what it is, so.
I have it if you want to look at it.
No, thank you, thank you.
Half and a half, I have lots of it.
Thank you.
Is that, do we need to just put that in, into the minutes, just how much it is, just for a record?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
We know what it is, but...
Yeah, yep.
Will we be looking for a license then?
Not right now, we will not be, we will not be, no.
All right.
We have his license out there, so we're okay. Let's see, where was that?
Sixth grade, 16th, I think, Public Works Director.
Was this one?
Under the yellow, or the yellow.
We get it, that goes in.
Yeah, so it would be right here. At 3723.
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven, twenty-three. Which is lower than what we've been paying, so, you know, starting now, he'll have, you know, the years don't want to be long this year, he'll be able to increase as he goes.
Grade 16, step two.
Correct.
Thank you, man.
Any other?
Oh, I apologize. What, it's back grades and step, I don't know, that might be the 2015.
No, I believe that that's what we looked at today.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then I'd like to move ahead. We get a motion then on the Public Works Department to hire Charlie Bradford at step two. What was it, grade?
Sixteen.
Grade sixteen, step two. Effective January 14th of 2016. Yep. I'll make that motion. Second? Okay, a motion's been made for Public Works job to hire Charlie Bradford. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name. Motion passed.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on. As New Business, Mayor's report, I have a few things I want to discuss. One, I just want to bring it up and maybe look into it. This year, the police department had 4,037 phone calls. 4,037 calls to our police department. I've been talking to Chief Shook, he has no secretary there. None. He sits in there himself and answers the phone, and he's chief. So, I'm looking at maybe some discussion here and trying to figure out something where we can get a part, at least start out a part-time, someone down there where he can get out of the office and go be a policeman. And, so Teresa, I want, you know, maybe to look into that because it's 4,037 calls. That's, it's the highest ever.
And I did initiate the conversation with Ken, and I've also talked with some of the other city employees, the possibility of covering it.
Okay.
I can bring something to your next meeting.
Sure, that'd be great. Also, my computer on here, because I have to read it off of there. It was brought to my attention today from Judy Rupert.
What did I do?
But there was a new ranking that came out of the state of Minnesota.
Oh, yeah.
And the 17 cheapest, yet great places to live in Minnesota. And this just came out January 11th, and Cassin is ranked third. So that's pretty neat. So, that goes, you know, everybody in the city's doing a great job, so we really appreciate that. And it also, I believe, will rank number 12 in the state for livability. So, and that has a lot to do with the, actually with the lowest crime rate in the state of Minnesota, so. I want to get our, I think we'll back to you on our chief of secretary, but, but no, it's just something that was pretty neat, I'm pretty proud to, proud to see that, so. That should be in the news. All right. Then we'll move along. I have some appointments I need to make for some committees, and I'm going to run through them, get a motion on each one as I go through. And the Water Tower Committee, Ron Unger to be appointed on that, can I get a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motions have been made for the Water Tower Committee for Ron Unger, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name. Motion passed. On the EDA, Julie Olstead to fill remainder of Lynn Sturgis' term ending December 31st, 2016. Make that motion. Second? Motion's been made for Julie Olstead to fill the remainder of Lynn Sturgis on the EDA. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name. Motion passed. On the Park Board, Greg Cubal, three-year ending term, December 31st of 2018.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Okay, a motion's been made for Greg Cubal to be on the Park Board for three-year term ending December 31st, 2018. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name. Motion passed. Library Board, Lisa Carlson, three-year term ending December 31st, 2018.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made from Library Board for Lisa Carlson, three-year term ending December 31st, 2018. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name. Motion passed. Library Board, Tarek Kamel, three-year term ending December 31st, 2018.
Motion.
Second? Motion's been made for the Library Board for Tarek Kamel, three-year term ending December 31st, 2018. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name. Motion passed. And then, to appoint the official newspaper for the City of Cassin and Dodge County Independent. Do you have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Sorry?
Motion's been made to appoint an official newspaper for the City of Cassin Dodge County Independent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name. Motion passed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just remind you again that you still owe Cory and I another person for the planning and zoning?
Yes, yep, yep.
And I thought with all this group of interesting people...
Yeah, I've been looking for, yeah, yeah, all these people here. Anyone here want to be on the planning and zoning? I've been trying and trying to find somebody, so is there anyone interested?
Don't be shy.
It's a fun job.
You learn a lot.
Guaranteed to learn something.
Yeah. Is there anyone in here interested?
And we almost always take December off.
You don't have to raise your hand right now, you can come in later. Don't be shy.
Okay, move on to the administrators' report.
All right, well, I was asked to put together an employee policy regarding contacting the city attorney, and I did put a draft in your packet for everyone to look at. I made a few changes in the meantime, since you received your packet, based on feedback from the council, from the mayor, from the city attorney. So, it amounts of, in the case of ongoing city projects, approval will be given to authorize staff on a per-project basis, and then also, nothing in this section shall limit the police department's access to the city attorney.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I think that you, you know, we added, our police department should be exempt on that, so that's good.
He looked good to me, what I read. You look good to me, whatever. I got a question. If I wanna call and talk to the city attorney, and I talk to you and you say yes, how is the city attorney gonna know that? You gotta call him to tell him that I, I can talk to him, or we don't have that?
What do you have on there?
Says it right.
In writing.
In writing, through approval, yeah.
You could, we could run it all through the city administrator and have her contact the attorney. And then if the attorney needs to contact the councilperson or employee, he can call them. That way, it's run through the chain of command.
Well, dogging on that would be is that, you know how secondhand stuff gets...
No, but if you contact...
Just let me finish. How, if I say something to Teresa, she may not get exactly how I want it, then I just doubled up the time with the attorney if they're gonna call back.
But you contact the city administrator and mention what you want. She can say yes or no. And then the attorney can call you or you can call the attorney, but it would, it would be right through the very top of the city. You know, you can just state your basic, what you want.
I think we gotta have more than one person. I mean, if she's at a meeting, so I, I think we wanna leave it as at least two people on there for, for that, with this UN era. Yes.
There's also a line in here that says, nothing in this section shall limit any persons right under the law to contact the city attorney, so it's, you know, anybody can still contact them, but now we're just trying to...
And we're trying to save money.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause every time he picks that phone up, it costs us money.
The discretion of the attorney, I'd imagine. You call him about something, he's gonna let you know, you know?
Well, now, with two, we have an administrator. A lot of times, our questions can be answered through the administrator, 'cause they'll know more of the law than we would, and we won't have to call the attorney. That would save a lot, too.
Well, we can table it and look at it more.
Sure, I can bring it back to your next meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Let's do that.
All right.
Um, next up, communications policy.
Right. There was a mention of having a communications policy, I think at your last meeting, and there is one in the employee handbook, so I wanted to provide you each with a copy of the communications policy. If you see anything that you feel that we could work on or expand upon, I'd be happy to, you know, take some feedback. You can email me after the meeting if you'd like, and then we can...
Yeah, I think we'll look at that, yeah. We'll all take a look at it more and...
Bring that back as well. Can I hit a couple other, should I let me hit a couple other high points? Okay, thank you. We did put out an RFP for a new city attorney. We mailed copies of the RFP to all the local firms. Joe Kozinski was good enough to kind of highlight some local firms that he thought we would send the RFP directly to. We also listed it on the Lea Minnesota Cities website, and I've had five additional inquiries requesting the RFP. Those are due on January twenty-first at 1:00 PM, so at your next meeting, we should have those RFPs back and, and be able to present those. Joe has asked that we have somebody onboard March first, so there'll be an overlap between he and the new firm. I did have a question today about education and meetings, which is also in the employee handbook. It does ask that employees bring back a certificate of completion or evidence of a passing grade for any trainings that they attend, for those that you approved today. We have been collecting those certificates and certifications in the past, and we'll continue to do that. We will have those for you. And then just a question about the council doing a work session. I know you did a work session on a Saturday last year and...
You guys wanna do that again?
It doesn't hurt, I just did the...
Having a work session.
Make a layout of our plan.
Why don't you guys look at some Saturday mornings again? That seemed to work pretty good where we had it last year, out to the Public Works Department. Yeah, they had a nice big room there. You know, just look at your calendars, and maybe next time we'll kind of come up with a date.
All right. Thank you very much.
Um, engineers report, nothing tonight?
That's correct.
Nothing on personnel, correspondence. We have a piece report in there, SEMLM, January twenty-seventh, you notice is in there. Again, congratulations to Charlie Bradford for accepting the position. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.